Alright, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh and a very good evening from Malaysia. I'm Azad, I will be your moderator tonight. So this is a study session, this study session tonight is organised by Sisters in Islam. For your information, today's study session, we are not only live on Zoom, but we are also live on Sisters in Islam's Facebook page. You may also tune in a live stream on Sisters in Islam Facebook. So today's study session is about women's in jihadist movement and observation on Southeast Asian region. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone, every participant on Zoom, as well as participants, our audience on Facebook for tuning in, for watching, for spending your time with us tonight to discuss, you know, about critical issues in regards to jihadist movement, especially the role of women in this movement. To discuss about the topic tonight, we have brought to you three prominent speakers from different countries in Southeast Asia that require no further introduction. For those who are working in, you know, prevention of violent extremism and peace building, you would know these speakers already, but then I will read their short bios anyway. So the first speaker, we have Dina Zaman. Dina Zaman is a director of business development at Iman Research and has always been fascinated by identity. As a third culture kid, being bounced from country to country, school to another, the tropics of temperature, climate, if we just talk about climate just now, yeah, that resonates very much. She found how people identified themselves a great curiosity. It was only in 2004 when she joined MalaysiaKini.com that she finally put her observations to paper, which then became a book, I Am Muslim. Today, she no longer writes for Malaysian media as she left to found Iman Research. Instead, she discusses religion in public life and contributes to the counterviolent extremism sector. She is fascinated how faith is political, sociological and emotional and how it impacts lives. She has published three books, one of which is fiction and hopes to have a new book out in November 2021. Good luck on that, Dina, and then maybe you could tell us a little bit about that later. Alright, so our second speaker is Amina Rosso Bernado, joining us from Manila, the Philippines. Amina Rosso Bernado is the president of Philippine Centre for Islam and Democracy, chosen as one of three Philippine representatives to the ASEAN Women for the Peace Registry in 2018. She is one of the leading Muslim leaders in the Philippines, working to strengthen peace and development as well as promote human rights, justice, democratic practices in Muslim Mindanao. She has spearheaded the organising and capacity building of Muslim women, particularly those who teach in the Madrasa for Peace Building and Prevention of Violent Extremism. She has written and edited several books on the Mindanao conflict, Islam and Democracy. She was also a UN Peace Awardee for 2019. In 2007, she received the Muslim Democrat of the Year Award from the Washington DC Bay Centre for the Study of Islam and Democracy. That's very impressive and is recognised as one of the 500 most influential Muslims by the Royal Al-Bait Foundation of Jordan. There you go, so we have our second speaker for tonight. Very impressive bio. And then our last and our third speaker is Dwi Rubianti Khalifa, who was joining us from Indonesia. Dwi Rubianti Khalifa is the Secretary General of ASEAN Muslim Action Network, AMAN, and country representative of AMAN in Indonesia. Her role is to expand peace initiatives across nations and generations, especially to bring the leadership of women into the decision-making process relating to peace building, facilitate inter and intra-face and strengthen collaborations across Muslim communities in Asia. She received several awards such as NPEA Award 2016, Hundred Women of Salt Magazine 2015, one of the BBC's 100 Women 2014 and ASEAN Development Fellow in 2014. She has written and edited several books and articles and blogs as well. She is an active member of the national, regional, global alliances and engages in leadership and peace building issues. So from the reading of their bios, you can see that they're clearly experts in their own fields, especially in prevention of violent extremism. You know, they are the right person to talk about these topics tonight. Alright, before we go further, right? I just want to give you a little bit of context about our discussion tonight. The topic again is about women in jihadist movement and observation on Southeast Asia. Just, I just want to read a little bit of background about, just to give you an idea, what are we trying to discuss tonight? In 1980s, many foreign fighters joined ISIS to go against the Soviet Union occupation in Southeast Asia. Many Muslims and from Southeast Asia travelled to Pakistan to support Mujahideen. And in the early to mid 1990s, the al-Qaeda terrorist network extended its reach to Southeast Asia and set up local cells to support its global operations and to cooperate among indigenous Islamic groups. Over time, although there was a steady decline in extremist violence and weakening of jihadi networks in Southeast Asia due to enhanced vigilance, effective law enforcement, nevertheless, the jihadi ideology continues to be widely disseminated. And also, the active players are not only men anymore. You can see a lot of women also play an active role in jihadist movement. So if I may cite like three cases in different Southeast Asian countries, like 2020 Jolo bombing in the Philippines and also 2018 Surabaya bombings in Indonesia. These incidents, terrorist incidents involve women who are also mothers, you know. And also in Malaysia, in 2018, towards the general election was reported that there was a mother, a lone wolf mother who subscribed to the ISIS ideology, attempted to bomb at the polling station during the general election. So we are wondering why this is happening, why the trend is changing? So that's why we are discussing today's topic. So before we start, I just want to remind our participants on Zoom and also Facebook on some logistical matters. For Zoom audience, you may post your questions. We really encourage you ask questions or give your comments or feedbacks to our speakers through, by using our chat box. Or you may raise your hand and use audio to ask question later after the session. For Facebook audience, you may post your questions or comments on the live comment sections. Alright, so I think that we are good to go. Without further ado, let's have Dina to start, to set the stage.
Okay. Right, so Assalamualaikum, can everyone hear me? Loud and clear? Okay, thank you. Thank you everyone, thank you to Sisters in Islam for inviting all three of us, Amina, Igurubi and myself. I'm a little bit nervous, I haven't been presenting for quite a bit. I think tonight, I would like to share some of the findings that Iman has, you know, done over the years. And which is also related to my, well, would-be PhD, you know, research and all that. So I'm going to combine it, I like to have it done in a very conversational way instead of, you know, slide this, slide that, can't. So I'll touch on the slides, don't worry. But I just want to have a conversation with all of you and we can have a Q and A at the end of, you know, our presentation. So before I go to that, one, I'm one of the co-founders, I'm not the main co-founder of Iman Research. There's Altaf, there's Nicholas Chan, there's Badro. And my book will only be published next year. It's been going like this every year, it moves one year a bit. So anyways, so here I am, so can we have a presentation slides ready? Thank you. So yes, the title of this presentation tonight would be, An Indian Extremism: The Role of Women in Hateful Extremism. And before I go on to the other slides, one of the things that I'd like to bring to the audience and everyone here is that I think we all need to discuss what is extremism, yeah? When we first started out and we started meeting, you know, civil society organisations, right? They all said, we don't have a problem with terrorism or jihadis in Malaysia. It's economic extremism, it's political extremism, it's racial extremism. There are just so many definitions to this, you know, the United Nations definition and all, but I'd like all of us to think, what is it? And one thing is for sure, that keeps being told to us every time we do a focus group discussion. Our idea of extremism may not be that person's idea of extremism. People have said to us that, you know, what you're presenting is an example of Islamophobia or Christendipophobia. Why do you keep othering us? So we have to look at the context of extremism in that way, it's a big thing. So for tonight's discussion, we're just going to look at one of the aspects of, you know, violent extremism. Next slide please. Next slide? Okay, next slide. Alright, so I think Azad did a fantastic introduction to, you know, violent extremism in Malaysia. So I am not going to go into depth about this. As you can see, it's had a significant impact on individuals, communities and institutions around the world. And in Malaysia, we've always had a history of radicalisation. I'm not talking even about the hard time in 1969, after May 13. When you look back, you know, when even before we were colonised, we've always had a history of, you know, stamping our ground. So perhaps at that time, it wasn't considered violent extremism, it was basically protecting our lands, yeah? And one of the things that I would also touch upon right now in this presentation would be that, you know, a lot of us don't look at violent extremism from, you know, other angles. We're always looking at people's behaviours. But one of the things that Igurubi and I have been talking about, and of course, where like we meet money, we meet money, you know, to do this research is, we need to research on counter-terrorism financing. There's a lot of it going through and even during Covid, I still remember one presentation, one forum I did, where a member of the enforcement agency Malaysia said that thanks to Covid, there are no terrorism activities. And they weren't sure of this, but we were thinking, how sure are you? When people are actually not just using, you know, the money changes now to send, you know, money abroad to any charity. And a lot of times, counter-terrorism financing is actually conducted by women. You know, they probably say, okay, I've got this charity, I'll get this, I'll use this and it'll go somewhere. So that's one aspect that we've not really studied, yeah? Okay, next slide please. So this is the Malaysian experience, right? So far, what we know is that 44 women have been arrested for terror-related activities. Now I had a conversation with Swarom this morning and we all had this chat where, you know, how do you know that these 44 women or the 100 men etc are actually terrorists? I think all of you know that you are actually, you know, committing a offence, right? If you go to a Facebook page or, you know, a social media page that belongs to a terrorist group, then the police can catch you and off you go, you know, you're arrested under Sosma. And even if you're a curious bystander, that can actually put you into jail. So how do we define what is terrorism or what is, you know, I'm curious, I want to know what's going on there? That has not been actually discussed. The enforcement agency's role is, we catch you, we put you and we'll deal with this later. But for people like Iman, Sisters in Islam, all this, you know, NGOs in Malaysia, right? This is something we have to talk about, what makes you a terrorist? You can't just label someone like that. We also know that while the government has actually said that we have about 98% success in de-radicalising, you know, terrorists in jails, we have also met or had discussions with some who said, well, you know, we pretended. You know, because in jail, you become more radicalised, especially if you were innocent to begin with and you get angry, you want to fight the state. Then we also have returnees from Syria, including women and children. Last we heard, and it's really, really close, the police won't talk about it. Yes, estimating about 14, you know, about plus women coming back. But again, these are the official numbers, next slide please. Alright, so what are women's roles in, you know, in jihadi activities, terrorist activities? I think a lot of people, especially the Western world, like the idea of, you know, pastic Muslim women, oh, you know, I'm falling in love with this militant, you know, husband of mine, I'm going to bear children, they're going to fight for the Islamic state. But actually, women play bigger roles than just being, you know, the wife, the history and soleha here. Yes, their mothers and wives, one or two, right? They actually are the ones who are very dominant in the family and the marriage because they're raising the next generation of fighters and they're married to fighters. They're also propagandists and recruiters. Through our field worker, we had discussions, I've not met this person, right? They're all highly educated, they speak English. We're talking about this new, you know, neo-female jihadis that you have now, who don't play their traditional roles and who are not exactly from rural, you know, backgrounds. They're very active in religious cell groups, they recruit, they persuade their friends and boo. They do a lot of fundraising. We know of one Malaysian woman who went to very good universities and worked for one of the big four accounting firms in Malaysia. And she had this religious crisis and decided, okay, I'm going to join ISIS. So what she does is she fundraises, she tells the militant groups, this is how you do your work, this is how you audit your expenses, I'm not joking. But, and she also teaches the children of these militant groups English. They plan, they plot, they attack. Through our field worker also, they have the conversations with one jihadi group in Indonesia where the women, you know, they supported their men who are militants. They didn't believe in polygamy, they didn't believe in a lot of things. In that sense, you're very feminist, but they also believe in the idea of patriarchy in Islamic state. So it can be a contradiction, you know, when you meet and talk to them, you go, okay, you're running from this extreme to the other extreme. But like everyone else, you know, we're not just one person, right? Next slide please. Okay, so I'm just going to touch on this, yeah? So you see this, you know, Dr. C travelled to Syria, America, you know, Moroccan fighter, blocker experience on a diary of a Muay Thai giraffe. There's another one who engaged in discussions on religion and jihadi activities. Well, I think, like allegiance and all. So you can see that there are different kind of personalities here. Some of the women that I have met here who have been released from prison, right? They're from working class backgrounds, it didn't mean that they're all uneducated, they're not. They went to local universities. But most of them told me and the other researcher that, you know, oh, they're not, you know, we don't believe in militancy, in ISIS, in GI and all, we all take, you know, a jaila on Facebook. But when you have these conversations, you know, sometimes they'll let on a bit about what they're doing, you realise they're really, really involved in this. Next please. Alright, now I thought, you know, that was what we were doing, yeah? Now, what we're seeing is while we're dealing with jihadi, you know, activities in Malaysia, we are also dealing with, you know, with the rise and rest of far-right nationalism, okay? I think for most Malaysians, you would understand what this librous path is all about. You know, we had this holding dong over the weekend. The point is not about the advertisement, the point is, and what I want to show is that women are not, you know, if they're not involved in activities that, you know, that the scouts, security and enforcement agencies, a lot of them are also involved in these movements in Malaysia. I would say, and many times, I have been actually odd, very surprised, not inspired though, by the fact that these women are actually taking the, you know, the bull by the horns and saying, we are not going to deal with what's happening in Malaysia, the government has failed us. There are a lot of, you know, unhealthy things that's happening in Malaysia. Hence, we will take this step, I mean, the men can do whatever they want. But it's the women who are saying, no. Now, is this right or wrong? I don't know. They could accuse all of us tonight for being Islamophobic. But when you look from that point of view, they're saying, no, we are good Muslims. So they may not be terrorists in that sense. But on this knee, on the side, they're also very militant in their ideology where the other people who are not like them, which is being Malay and being Muslim. Can we go to the next slide please? Alright, so you see, this is what I do most of the time, you know. I'm always on Facebook, just looking at the stuff. Now, this, all this happened, right? While we were dealing with ISIS etc, you know. In 2018, when Paketan Harapan took over, yeah, Barisan National, we wanted all that. We personally, in a CBE space, saw, you know, basically, anything that dealt with PCBE just died, right? And a lot of Malays, at that time, you know, when we were noticing this, a lot of Malays were not happy with seeing a lot of non, you know, seeing non-Malays faces in government. So the spike in far-right nationalism, you know, just, yes, I know, exploded and we were going, wow! So in fact, this year itself, right? Every month, there's always either a new far-right group or a new complaint like this librous thing that we had to deal with over the weekend. Now, a lot of us can, you know, can say, cool, cool, you know, it's just, you know, small, small stuff and all that, but nothing to worry about. But it is something to worry about for all of us who work in this space because Malaysia is a multicultural country. So how are we going to navigate this space? I mean, it's no longer about tolerance, you know, it's about acceptance. But when you have maybe a minority group who are very powerful, who has a money, who are highly educated, who are setting the agenda for, you know, the average Malay in this country, what do you do then? And that's something that a lot of, I feel personally that perhaps certain enforcement agencies are not looking at because they probably say, they might just say, well, that's not a problem because I'm Malay, I'm Muslim, so that's not a real problem. But for all of us in this, you know, in this sector, it is an issue. Because we have, you know, I mean, we have a lot of people from, you know, different races, backgrounds, living in this country, different classes. Now, what do we do when someone is hijacking that agenda and saying, this is how it should be? Next slide please. Okay, so sorry, Dr. Farshid, I don't know him, but you know, I'm giving you an example, yeah? So what you're seeing right now, and this, I presented one small group, right? So I remember I woke up and everyone was asking, why is Dr. Farshid presenting at this? Because the group behind this group is very, very right-wing. Now, you see this, you know, this Dr. Asna Hatta, I also don't know him, right? But he looks good, he's wearing a suit, you know, he looks very polished. Basically, what they're doing is, they're mainstreaming extremist views sophisticatedly. I've heard, you know, on Facebook Live, talks that they had. Some of the stuff they say are very valid. And how they present it is, you know, is such a man that he can't believe that they are, you know, right-wingers. So next slide please. So why are Muslim Malaysian women and men doing this? If they're not joining, you know, I'm not saying all of them, right? And here's another convie. I don't, you know, I certainly don't want people to think that being a Muslim means that you become a terrorist or you become a right, you know, right-wing nationalist. I think that as Muslims, you know, we have our duties to God, to Allah, right? But there is a certain segment and it's growing. What you're saying, you know, it's so difficult being a Muslim or a Malay in Malaysia. And every conversation we've had ever since Iman started, whoever we talk to, whether they're young or old, you know, everyone looks at us, Malays, as being corruptla, lazyla, stupidla, everything, you know. The only identity we have is to be a very good Muslim. And this siege mentality keeps going on and on and on. Now, I actually observed very briefly a far-right groups webinar in July. And it came, it came up, the lack of social capital. Now, I was there on the other side of the screen scratching my head going, but you drive a nice car, you live in a decent house, how is it that you can think that you don't have social capital when you're educated? You have more than a lot of people have in Malaysia. But that is what they all believe. Next slide please. So okay, I'm not going to go through this, I can share this, you know, but basically, almost 35 times today, they see 94%, you know, see that Islam is very, very important to them. The internet is very, very important to them. So a lot of them also said, why do they listen to foreign scholars like, well, you know, like Ustaz Omar Sliman, you know, etc, Sheikh Niwawi and all? Simply because they feel that the state has not provided them with a proper education of Islam. In Malaysia, they feel, in, you know, especially in government schools, that when you go to, when you learn about Islam, it's always about, you better get an E, if not, you'll, you know, end up outside doing the Tampi and all. It's never about the true Islam. So people go, you know, to the internet. And I feel as researchers, we've not explored enough what the internet can do. Now I hear there's a lot on TikTok, I can't cope with social media anymore. But we have to actually see, this is what people are looking for. They're looking for salvation, they're looking for a hope, okay? Now, another reason why they are embracing this Islamic identity, right? And it's not wrong, you know, because that's how we Muslims feel, right? They realise that because public perceptions of Muslims globally is not favourable. I mean, let's not talk about Malaysia, let's look at our sisters and brothers in the US, in Europe and all where everyone thinks they're a terrorist, they're, you know, they're being profiled all the time. Even when you talk about, sorry donors, but you know, sometimes when you talk about CB programmes, there's always a complaint, it's coming from a Western country, you're actually using a white secular framework to study us. I mean, where do our voices come? Next slide please. Yeah, I know I don't have much at times, I'll just talk about this, yeah? So I talked about how Islam is very important to them. Supporting halal businesses and Muslim enterprises are very important, even if it means that they will be in debt or they are in debt. And I thought that was fascinating, I tagged along a friend who did that Wonder Man and Thompson report on the Muslimah behaviour, where supporting a Muslim business or even a Malay business is so, so important that it didn't matter if, you know, they got themselves into trouble. They all felt that Muslim-struck Malay businesses or the identity was being attacked. Now, before, we hear, oh, we don't like the Chinese, we don't like the Indians, right? There was this resentment and distrust towards non-Malays. Right now, there's an increasing number of Malays who are saying, you know what, we don't even like, you know, some of the Malays. Allah, they've got cables, they've got that network, they're trust fund babies, they can do this. What's going to happen to me who has, you know, this young guy or young woman who has to sell, you know, serundeng or bergaramitapijalan? There is no space in Malaysia for us, so that's what they feel. There's also internalised misogyny, you know. The women are highly educated, they hold jobs. But sometimes when you have conversations with them, you know, over even practical stuff, right? Like shopping, you know. You start wondering where they get these ideas from, you know. Why are they taking themselves back? Why are they, you know, pushing a very patriarchal idea of, not just of faith, of identity to the fore? When you look at our history, how Malay women, Muslim women in Malaysia or in Tana, La Yul years and years ago, we were quite progressive, you know, we were entrepreneurs, etc, etc. You know, if our husbands were naughty, we'd divorce them and throw them out. Now everyone's just accepting, so it was a bit of a, you know, for me, when I was listening to all this, I just thought to myself, gosh, how do you reverse everything in your head? Is it your pressure that's making you do this? Is it because you have fears? I don't know. Okay, next please. Next slide please. Please tell me if I'm just, you know, going, you know, I'm going over time. Alright, I'm going to give you examples from the field. So I'm not going to tell you where they are, who they are and all that. I think we all die, but anyway, so one was very extremely wealthy organisation, you know. So if you go there, please don't wear, you know, don't bring a Kate's pit and handbag, darling. Bring a Dior, bring a, you know, a Gucci minimum, yeah? We had someone who went in and because she didn't wear a riot, carried a riot hat, she was pushed to the back, so she complained a lot. So that was quite funny, but we see, when you look, I mentioned about charity funding, terrorism financing, okay? Now, this particular foundation, right? There were many, many, it was trusts. There were many, many Ustras, you know, conducted by foreign, I mean, that I don't think there were even any Malaysian ulamas there. One or two of the teachers has to be known to be involved in IS recruitment. Now, what we notice, and what I personally know also, is that whenever they say, look, there is this charity that needs money, there are some people, often people are dying in famine in another country in Yaman for its own, please, can we get some money? Most of the ones who were actually, uh, sending, you know, peace in these Ustras were the women, not even their husbands, huh? And they were taking out money, and we're not talking about five hundred ringgit, they were talking about once of cash. And you go, eh, that's a lot of money, you know, um, and they, they all have bodyguards and all, so for us, we're wondering, okay, it's good that you're very charitable, but where's that money going? That person may just say that, you know, he's going to da-da-da, but is it really going to that charity? Another one is by a revert, uh, has helped prominent Islamic oppositions globally. I have chats, I've had chats with the police. And, you know, you can't exactly accuse this person of wafting juice. Bless you, uh, okay? So, um, so you, you can't exactly say that, but at the same time, he does hold very hotline ideas of Islam, though, and he's based, very famous. Uh, and what I do notice, and I know I have friends and relatives who wrote there, is that there are some teachings that, you know, actually, you know, uh, break apart families. But, you know, we are also looking at, not, it's not at also how he teaches, but where's the money going, you know? Why? Why is this happening? Uh, the last one, again, that was touch is that the community is prone to radicalization. English-buried educated professionals, they have small, small Ustras, right? Again, they all spoke English, uh, we actually, I want to see them as this, working class entering the middle class, but they all speak English, they refuse to speak Malay. Highly, highly political, now, this was before our elections, right? The groups have been observed by police before, and they're highly suspected for recruitment. And they were all laughing, so we know who's going to win the elections. Doesn't matter, Malaysia's going to just fall down and, uh, will take over. Again, you know, you think, wow, these women are really tough, yeah? Next slide please. Okay, so can we go to the next slide? I just, I spoke about that. So, okay, you can see, that's me, I'm having a headache there. Uh, okay, these were all these WhatsApps that I would get from relatives and friends. You have to help this person, you have to help this international school, blah, blah, blah. So I got this, and I'm going, uh, so I spoke to one or two policemen and the person behind this was a revert, and she used to work in the Roy Rogers Restaurants and McDonald's in the States. I know this, it is gonna sound politically incorrect, but there are many, many reveres who come to Malaysia. Maybe because they also want to live in a Muslim country, but maybe the intentions are not pure either. So the thing is, when this was going on, right, um, there was a lot of people saying, we have to help this person, and that's one thing about Malay Muslims in Malaysia, what is it when you, oh, when you see a a white revert, sorry if I offend anyone, uh, you get, you know, get so excited. Anyway, what we found out is that, uh, this person is not kosher lah. So again, the money is going somewhere. We don't know whether it's going to that person's pockets or it's really going to this integrated cafes, voila, voila. Uh, next slide please. Yeah, is the end of it, so I'm actually just giving you, you know, just a little bit of one percent of the work that we've been doing. Um, for us, you know, I mean, as researchers, we don't really judge, you know, this is just work for us. Of course, sometimes you start panicking, but this is the landscape of Muslim Malaysia. Isn't bad, I wouldn't say that all Malay Muslims in Malaysia or Chinese Muslim individuals are like that, no. The majority of us are very moderate. But the fact that this minority groups can actually destroy a country or a community or a location is very worrying. And in times of strife like now, we're all going through a pandemic, and even if things are a bit more relaxed, uh, the fact that our social fabric is very fragile. We don't know whether we're gonna have another pandemic in the next few months. I mean, I personally, as a Malaysian, I'm okay with whatever now, what's gonna happen to Malaysia? Will we be safe? Will we be able to live together in the future? But I'm gonna stop now, and we'll have a chit-chat later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. Um, next, can we just go straight to, um, Ruby?
Oh, I thought Amina.
Amina, yes, I'm sorry about that. Let's go to Amina first.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can, can we have the slides, please? Thank you. Well, salam and good evening to all of you fellow peace builders. First, I've been asked to say something about the Philippine Center for Islam and Democracy. We actually started as a very loose council in two thousand and one, when the war on terror had resulted to Muslims being labeled as terrorists, regardless of their actual belief and practice of peace. We realized then that majority of the Muslims in the Philippines were rarely heard. The voices heard were those of our political leaders or rebel leaders. Many times, their positions were not exactly reflective of the wishes or the thoughts of majority of Muslims. And we were also worried about the radicalization of our communities in part of the first, the first slide, in part driven by anti-Islam rhetoric. Would you go back to the first slide, please? And so, um, we came together and our vision was to be a non-partisan, nonprofit organization dedicated to the study of Islamic and democratic thought, working towards a just peace, equitable development, and genuine democracy in Muslim communities. And our mission, first and foremost, was to help Muslims in the Philippines find their voice in the democratic arena. And we also sought to promote human rights, to advocate for electoral reform, to support good governance, to help establish genuine autonomy, and inclusive peace processes. PCID was probably the first organization in the Philippines looking into the radicalization of Muslim communities in the Philippines. And, um, we have published articles and books about that. Next, please. Now, as you can see, I, I haven't mentioned anything about women in that initial presentation. PCID actually got involved in the empowerment of women when we were requested by our ulama to help, to help them organize a national network. And we spent three years helping them organize the network. While doing so, we found out that many women taught at the Madrasa and were quite effective in communicating with young people and with their communities. So we started working with them, empowering them, doing capacity building, and we helped them organize, linking them with Muslim civil society leaders uh, and professionals as well. And this activity started in two thousand and three. Next, please. We succeeded in working closely with them, establishing good relationships with them. And we succeeded in organizing the ustajas, the Muslim civil society leaders and professionals into a network called Nurustalam, or Light of Peace. Nurustalam is particularly active in, um, provinces in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao and in Metro Manila as well. We have been engaged in the women's sector since, realizing that there is a higher return on our investments when we invest in women empowerment. Next, please. Together with them and our religious leaders, we actually worked with the Philippine Commission on Human Rights to develop a training manual to teach human rights within an Islamic framework. And CHR has, uh, used this, uh, manual for their field workers in Mindanao. Next, please. Our latest initiative is a podcast called She Talks Peace, and my anchor is the first speaker, Dina Zaman. Um, we actually started just last August, and our conversations have been well received. Some universities have actually asked me permission to use our podcast as resource materials for their peace studies and for their gender studies as well. And I'm so proud to say, I was told by Podcast Network Asia that as of August, uh, She Talks Peace was ranked fifty-ninth among, um, Philippine podcasts that are available on Spotify. Uh, it's also available on Apple Podcasts, and I hope you can listen to our podcast, She Talks Peace. Next, please. Now let's look at armed conflict and extremism in the Philippines. The Philippines has had armed conflicts for more than seventy years now. The biggest threat to my mind is the, uh, left, uh, the extreme left, the Communist Party of the Philippines, New People's Army, National Democratic Front, or the CPPNPA NDF. Why? Because they're nationwide. And they seek the overthrow of the democratic ideology of the government in favor of communism. There is a peace process with them, but it has been on again and off again for the past, god knows, fifty years. And, um, I actually don't see it, um, um, delivering positive results. But Christian Filipinos actually are more afraid of the Muslim armed groups. Perhaps because of media, the, the Islamophobic rhetoric that initiated from the West, but they're more afraid of our armed groups. The reality is, the so-called war, the Moro Wars for Independence, started during the administration of the late strongman, uh, President Ferdinand Marcos. When Marcos declared martial law forty-nine years ago, we just, uh, commemorated the forty-ninth year of martial law rule, uh, yesterday. When he declared martial law, he cited the communists and what he called the Muslim separatists as justification for martial law. The reality was, there was really no Muslim armed separatist movement. There were political leaders who talked about our stolen independence or stolents of reinty, but there was no real armed threat. What happened was Marcos and his martial law actually was the driving force to the creation and the strengthening of the Moro National Liberation Front, which was led by Nur Miswari. In fact, some Muslim leaders close to the strongman dictator Ferdinand Marcos feared genocide, and their sons, nephews actually joined the MNLF and became leaders in, um, in the front. The MNLF and later the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, or the MILF, fought a war for independence, for the stolents of reinty. And that has been the basis of the peace processes with these liberation fronts, the MNLF and the MILF. The MNLF has signed peace agreements, so the peace process with them has been positive, um, which led to the creation of the Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao. The subsequent peace process with the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, or the MILF, expanded the territory of ARM, and it is now called the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao. And the agreement calls for BARM to have a different form of government from the national government. Uh, we now have in BARM a parliamentary, uh, system. And then there are the violent extremists, uh, the most well-known of which is the Abu Sayyaf and the Maute group, ISIS-affiliated groups, um, and the Maute group in partnership with the Abu Sayyaf were responsible for the Marawi siege in twenty seventeen, where they held the government forces at bay for months. Next, please. To aid the peace process, um, former President Marcos created the Office of the Presidential Advisor on the Peace Process. And, um, basis for negotiations for the peace process was to be a just and lasting peace through a process which is comprehensive, community-based, based on human rights, respecting civil liberties. And the, I guess the key word there is that it has to be inclusive. Of interest to us, particular interest to us tonight, is the fact that OPAP has been tasked with supporting the implementation of the Philippines National Action Plan on UN and CHR thirteen twenty-five, or the Women Peace and Security Agenda. Next, please. This may be because we have had two, uh, heads of OPAP, two presidential peace advisors who are, uh, women. Uh, the first one was Annabel Abaya, she has passed away. And the second, uh, Teresita Quintos Deles. Under, um, Secretary Deles, the negotiating panel of the government was led by a woman, uh, Miriam Coronel Ferrer, or Iye, as, as we call her. And under their administration and their negotiations, the MILF agreed on a comprehensive agreement for the Bangsamoro, which has become the basis for the creation of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao. Next, please. The Philippine National Action Plan on Women Peace and Security follows the UN Action Plan, calling for promotion and mainstreaming of the gender perspective in conflict prevention, uh, peace building, conflict resolution. It calls for the empowerment and participation of women and girls as change agents, protection of their rights and violence, uh, and prevention of violence against women. And very important, it calls for the monitoring and evaluation of, uh, the programs to ensure accountability in implementing women peace and security interventions. Unfortunately, I don't think the implementation has been very effective in the Muslim areas. And I think this is largely because the national government has really relied more on local governments, on government agencies, and civil society, the women's sector, have not been particularly strong partners or decision-makers in the implementation of the action plan. Next, please. Perhaps because of this, there has been no breaks on the radicalization of some of, uh, Muslim, um, Filipinas. Why have Muslim women in the Philippines turned to violent extremism? Next, please. She has become a poster girl for women who have turned to violent extremism. Farhana Maute of Lanau del Sur, she is, um, Maranau, she belongs to the Maranau, uh, group. She was a very successful businesswoman and belonged to a well-connected political family. She became the financier of her sons Abdullah and Omar Kayam, who were the leaders of the ISIS-affiliated group that laid siege to Marawi City from May twenty-three to October twenty-three, twenty seventeen. Next. from May twenty-three to October twenty-three, twenty seventeen. Next. And then we have Nana and Indatnay, who are widows of Abu Sayyaf leaders and the principal suspects of the August twenty-four bombings, August twenty-four of twenty twenty, uh, in my hometown. Last February, our government arrested nine women who were related to the Abu Sayyaf commanders and militants in the south and who could have been potential suicide bombers. The women who were arrested were sisters, daughters, or wives of the Abu Sayyaf, and they were all captured in my home province of Sulu. Next, please. As you can tell, these women's family ties were tight, which facilitated their indoctrination into violent extremism. Marriage has been used to improve or to strengthen the ties with some of these Abu Sayyaf leaders. And I guess what you can really see is that the indoctrination becomes easier because of their perception that persecution and oppression still exists. They still feel the discrimination in the sense of uh lack of access to opportunities perhaps, and the strong sense of injustice, which has not diminished in many of these communities. Because the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao still remains poorest of the poor. However, it is um positive to believe, to know that the women who have become radicalized are still a very tiny minority. Many organizations in the conflict areas are women-led, as women have an innate ability to connect with others. Thus, the women who are um active in civil society and people's organizations in Muslim Mindanao are critical change agents in their communities. And there has got to be a better um program of government, for instance, to promote these women leaders to position of actual influence and participation in decision-making. All of this exacerbated by the fact that Muslim Mindanao have the lowest education levels and the highest illiteracy level among adults. Next, please. We need to promote icons, Muslim women icons, who are peace builders. And I'd just like to show you a couple of examples. Next, please. Of course, I have to mention my mother. Uh, Santa Nina Nina Rasul became a senator, the first Muslim wi- uh, woman elected by the whole country. Uh, the election of senators is is by the whole country and not by district. And she was twice elected as a senator of the Philippines. And her principal advocacies have been women's rights, all women, and literacy of Muslim adults, particularly women. What I would like you to note is that when she ran for senator, she got, um, shall we say, the most number of votes in Muslim provinces as compared to the men who ran for for senate. So we can use examples like Nina Rasul as an exemplar on how women are can actually become influential in decision-making and help uplift the um uh life, the quality of life of all Muslims, as well as the nation. Next, please. The second example I like to cite is the former governor Tarhata Alontolukman, who is from Lano del Sur. When Princess Tarhata decided that she was going to run for governor, she was up against as um a candidate who was very close to the late President Ferdinand Marcos. And many told her, you can't win. Well, she did. Again, proof that a woman can be supported by the men in the community when they see that this woman has much to offer for the good of the community. Uh, the late Princess Tarhata Lukman was also very well-known as somebody who could settle vendettas, inter-clan wars. So this became one of the um major accomplishments of Princess Tarhata. In fact, I think she was cited by Time Magazine at one point when she was young for the work that she did settling vendettas. Next, please. Then there is um Baymatabay Plang, who is from Magindanao Province. Highly educated, she belonged to the nobility of the Magindanaos, and she spent her life in education, putting up a school which has since become a university. Again, somebody who was able to use her position in life to promote um an initiative that would better her community and was widely respected and widely supported by her community and by the men in Magindanao. So you've got three examples that we can use over and over to encourage women in the Muslim South, or women anywhere, that they can do anything once they put their mind to it. Next, please. In the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region, uh, the law requires that there be representation. So we have what they call the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. Eighty members are appointed by the president of the Philippines. And out of these eighty, one sectoral seat is guaranteed for women, one for youth, one for religious leaders, one for traditional leaders. Next, please. But the reality is a little better than what the law has um has required. In the BARM, for the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, you actually have thirteen women members of the uh authority out of eighty. So that's not so bad, not great, but not bad. In the cabinet of the Bangsa Moro, appointed by um the Chair of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, who's the head of the BARM, he has four women uh as members of cabinet. And among the mayors of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region, twenty-six out of a hundred sixteen are women. So it's uh not not so bad, but it could definitely be a lot better. Next, please. So what lessons um have we learned? If we are to turn the tide and find a way to neutralize the influence of violent extremist thought into our communities through the women, first and foremost, education is key, whether it is formal or informal. We have to improve the levels of um, uh, what you call it, educational attainment of girls, so that they complete their schooling all the way to college level and not leave to be able to support the family by working as a an overseas Filipino worker. And we have to expand the the informal sector, short programs, such as adult literacy programs for uh for the women. Second, civil society has to be supported, empowered, and partnered with by government. Third, we need to look at better collaboration with media, so that discrimination is neutralized. We have to have better relationships with the faith organizations, with our ulama, because they have voices that are heard and are very influential in Muslim communities, as borne by a survey that we conducted several years ago that showed that almost ninety percent of our community members said they trusted the ulama or the imam. And the closest in trust level was the local elected village captain. We call them the barangay captain. And the level of trust rating didn't even reach seventy percent. We also need to collaborate with the academia and the business so that they can provide opportunities which our women need to improve themselves. Fourth, networking is crucial. We need networking at the local level, at the national level, the way we did with the Nurus Salam. And we need to link them internationally, so that the Muslim teachers in the madrasas of the Muslim South can link with Ibu Ruby Scuppi in Indonesia and be able to strengthen their approaches. And last but not least, we need to continue lobbying, so that we become part of the peace process and we also become part of the political decision-making process. So so far, that's what I have to share with you from the Philippines, and we can have a discussion later if there are issues that are of further interest to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Amina. That was really interesting, but we'll discuss more later. Let's go to our last but not least speaker, Ruby.
Yes, uh, thank you. Assalamualaikum. Hello, everyone. I hope you can hear my voice clearly. Yeah. Okay, let me put my screen uh first. And thank you for Dina and Amina uh, that already set up the strong foundation uh from our discussion uh this evening. And I think my job will be much easier now to focus on the uh dynamic inside the jihadis movement. Uh, when I call jihadis, that actually, you know, a contesting um term that uh in in some scholar uh thing, that jihad is uh not necessarily actually associated with the violent extremist uh group, because the term jihad itself has a multi interpretation. So uh because this is contesting, so I am interested to put it into one of the our homework in the future to also produce more knowledge regarding uh this term. So let me start with Aman Indonesia work in Indonesia and surrounding uh uh strengthening the culture of peace. Uh, our strategy to create a religious city uh uh culture in Indonesia is actually by disseminating progressive interpretation of religious texts. As you may know, that Indonesia has been started on a discourse on gender and Islam for many years. And there are a lot of uh reference, the scholars, and also uh many innovative uh product that already available, including uh the Islamic reference that written by very prominent uh uh scholar. Uh, then our job is easier to uh bring the product into more meaningful and accessible for many people. And uh since the beginning of our intervention, we are very much patient with the idea on strengthening community resilience. But what make it different comparing to other peace build- peace building work is we we centralize the role of women by working with interfaith mothers uh in forty-two communities now. And we're using the Women's School for Peace Program as the incubator to uh produce a strong women uh leadership. So then the community will have enough uh uh women leaders with a strong perspective on gender and also peace building. We currently working in eleven provinces in Indonesia and partnering with more than fourteen uh local organization uh addressing issue of peace building, including uh responding violent extremism. Therefore, one of the strategy that we are having is supporting peace initiative that make uh us realizing that there are so many organizations in the local level lack of the access. And I think our present at the national level able to mobilize uh resources in supporting the local uh organization, and particularly women and youth initiative. Uh, the other strategy that Aman Indonesia in play uh um playing is also facilitating collective voices for advocacy. I think this strategy become our nature and identity now because we be we've been facilitator in initiating a lot of national network and local network, in particularly dealing with the advocacy that we want. Our policy uh making process is really uh um accountable and having full civil society participation in different uh level, including to make sure that gender mainstreaming are strong and and also the uh the 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 conflict-sensitive approach in all of the uh policy. So when Aman started our program on PVE, we realizing that the foundation that we has been started in two thousand and seven, that actually become very meaningful. And we realizing that we become uh uh more uh expansive because the foundation that we started in two thousand and seven by building community resilient finally uh recognized by the uh by the public, including uh the the government, yeah? We realizing that our work used to be very uh isolated, meaning that UN Indonesia are very dynamic and vibrant of civil society. And most of the work on gender equality and women empowerment are really uh um have a lot of attention. And we 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 got a lot of uh space to actually uh uh bringing the idea of gender equality in Islam, even in the public uh uh discourse and and in concrete with the birth of a Cupi that become the real, what we imagining about the Islamic feminism in Indonesia. So we are very lucky having this kind of example. But on the other hand, the work on PVE seems to be understood as something isolated from the work of peace building. That actually the first time why Aman Indonesia enter into the the world, because we thought that what we actually want to pre- if we want to prevent but uh violent ext- uh extremists, then we need to have the strong community, we need to have a strong family, we need to have the strong individual that able to resist with the radical uh idea. And that's all about this building work. And then that we are so happy then the resolution uh twenty twenty-two, twenty-one that released uh and twenty-two, forty-two really highlighting how important in connection with the women peace and security uh when we responding uh PVE. I think uh when the global study on the fifteen years implementation of women peace and security uh conducted and we realizing that uh one of very important uh recommendation uh shared by Radika Kumara Swami was the uh connection or intersection between uh conflict and PVE. It was the strong recommendation on we need to tackle uh uh PV uh women peace and uh women peace and security along with the i- along with the i- i- implementation on all the program on uh a PVE. Uh, one of the one of the strong highlight uh that Radika uh shared that there are many evidence shown uh in conflict-affected area or in post-conflict uh uh area, the rise of fundamentalism and radicalism is very high. Uh, this is very much in line with finally- This is very much in line with finally this the UN Secretary General. Launched the plan of action on PVE of preventing violent extremism and highlighted two important idea that make us have a strong connection when we work in peace building. And then it is very relevant we work on PVE. One is actually talking about the dialogue in conflict prevention. The idea is if you want to prevent violent extremism. Then you should prevent conflict and you should encourage more dialogue. Because with that way, you actually bridging a lot of different actors. Then that actually helping you to increase more understanding and reduce resistance among the different actors. And the other pillar that the UN Secretary General highlighted. The important on the work on gender equality and women empowerment. So this is one the key that I would like to share to you that if you work on gender equality and women empowerment, that exactly you working on preventing violent extremism. Why? Because the violent extremist group that actually challenge all the idea relating with the women rights and gender equality. And believing me in fourteen years, working with the community. When you increase the capacity of the women at aggressive level. With the gender equality and women empowerment, that actually make them more resistance to any strings ideology that actually come to them. And with that, actually, our intervention is much more now massive and engaging a lot of actors. And in particularly, Aman interested to make sure that the government and civil society is starting to use the women peace and security lens. There are three important things that I would like to share with you. The women peace and security can provide intersectional perspective. There is a strong and highlight in the discussion on women peace and security when we actually talking about women. We need to ensure that the women is not a single entities. Women has the diverse, you know, entities that we need to understand. So therefore, when we discussing each woman engaged in violent extremism. We need to know that the women has the unique experience, why they are engaged. And the reason is always unique and very specific. Therefore, we cannot make generalization when we discussing about the experience of women engaging in violent extremism. Number two is avoiding securitization and instrumentalization of the women. So women peace and security helping us to really see that we encouraging the role of women doesn't mean that the instrumentalization should be there. So we need to be very aware and we need to be very careful when the government starting to actually using the women not for the sake of empowering. But it is because of the natural biological function and we need to be very aware about that. And securitization is one of the very important issue highlighted on women peace and security. Because when the state realizing that threat against women. That very possible state releasing a policy. Perhaps preventing women engaging in a more, you know, a public war. Exposing into area that consider not secure. So we have to be very careful about this. And the last one is gender matters in PCE policy. It is about how matter gender lens when we actually responding PVE. The other issue we want our government also to understand. How legal frameworks around violent extremism create gender vulnerabilities. And how our government should be aware and understand. The international framework on women peace and security applies to the local policy on PVE. There are a lot of homework surrounding this, but this is the task of civil society. How to bridge the government understanding on women peace and security. At the same time, they also tackling violent extremism. So just want to share some of the data that may shocking you. That Indonesia experienced a lot of terrorist attack. Yeah, in the last twenty-five, twenty-first years, five hundred fifty-two attack happen. Of course, across, you know, island and different places. But at the same time, it is also interesting to see that the changing of trend of terrorist operation. In term of the type of terrorist attack, the object of operation. Including layers of terrorism victim. That recently attacked happened in Cigai, causing a lot of reflection among civil society that the way we understand victims should be changed because the victim is not only the somebody who got the direct attack. But they has the different layers when the terrorism happen in the community. So let's start with the data. I don't want to stay longer here, but I just want to see to share to you that this is the target of attack. I translated on the right part. And there are commercial, terrorism, military, individual. And I just want to highlight that on two thousand and twenty-one. We have a lot of attack on religious figure and places. That is the new trend of terrorism in Indonesia. And this is the type of the attack. So you will see that in two thousand is very high on bombing as the method. And now shifting here, there's no longer bombing as the one tool that they use. But the method that they're using a lot of way. The target is to create fear among the public. And this is the local terrorist group that actually you will see that the trend of here, the Mujahid in Indonesia Barat or MIB, this is the local terrorist group is mostly focused on kidnapping. And if you see Jemaah Islamiya focus on bombing. And the rest like Jamaah Ansor Tauhid or Jamaah Ansor Daula or Mujahid in Indonesia Timur. They use several attack, not focusing in a particularly method. And this is the, this is the this is the, this is almost the same. This is the damage. So if you see this, this the most critical damage during in twenty-one years in Indonesia, that actually Bali bombing. The Australian Embassy bombing and the Santa Anacostas bombing. After that, meaning that it's early two thousand. But after that, the attack is just causing like mostly medium. So meaning that they having very different, used to be they really calculating before they started bombing. But now they are more instant with a short planning. The idea is to create the fear as, as, how do you call it? As frequent as possible, you know, in many places. Therefore, now the level of damage is medium or even low. So I'm just highlighted several thing here. That on the target of attack used to be diplomatic mission is seriously targeted. Two thousand, two thousand two until five and two thousand nine. After that, there is no more diplomatic mission targeted by the terrorists. The police attack is very high in two thousand fourteen. But now we can see that individual target is getting also higher. So that is the new trend that we are reading now in Indonesia. Other thing that I would like to highlight is the women involvement. The women terrorists were used to be strong supporter of the husband, whether they are solo executor. And there are many success story where women actually be executor. And I think one that Isaac mentioned on the opening. And if you see this, I would like you to pay attention on the blue color. And then see how the role of women inside a violent extremist group actually expanding. And even become more and more advanced and unlimited. Because the presence of internet and social media. So if you asking whether they are still operating, they are still operating. With ISIS or without ISIS, the idea of Islamic State are still there. And this is the number now thirty-nine women convicted. They are in jail. And what is interesting from there is I would like you to bring into the clustering the women jihadis that analyzed by IPEC, International Policy Analysis on Conflict. The cluster that they are created is very unique. Number one, they put it Poso Cluster. Poso is the one city located in Central Surabaya. See used to experience armed conflict before, but they had a big mobilization of Christian and Muslim and with the present of the Laskar Jihad and Laskar Gristus at that time. And then they are just attacking one another, so that causing a lot of damage. And then what make a specific in Poso area, this actually become example how intersection of conflict and PVE need to be really pay attention for the government. If you see with this, the three big actors, Santoso, Ali Kalora and Basri. They also making the wife is really active agent in helping them out. Not only that, but also ensuring that they can keep alive of MIT. Mujahid in Indonesia Timur to operate their target. And the other cluster that we need to worry is also deportees. There are many women actually went to Syria and they detained and deported to Indonesia. Or they detained somewhere. And the idea of Islamic State are still there. And with the difficulty in doing reintegration in the society, there's very possible that they still doing recruitment and they still doing propaganda to support the idea of the Islamic State. The cluster of migrant worker is another that Indonesia very much concerned because like Angie, for example, very famous and recruited as a, when she was working in Hong Kong. And then operating become very powerful in managing Redaksi Hilafah and started recruitment. And that kind of story happened in many cases where we can see female terrorists. Who has the migrant worker background, they gaining feeling of empowerment and recognition when they joining with ISIS. And the cluster of social media, meaning that there are many female terrorists that recruited from social media. If you are aware about some names here, a very powerful one is actually Ika Puspita. That not only able to create connection with some women even inside the prison. But also doing financing through the, through her salary. And planning some of the attack in Indonesia. Again, you will see that how gender inequality, that actually bridging the women into ISIS. And this is the very specific that I compiling about the family bomber. That is make us realizing how powerful if women, married women and particularly who has children. Able to actually bringing the whole part of the family to do jihad. And we have a number of stories here that are very powerful and successful. And that actually also inspiring other more women to also perform jihad. And particularly with the, you know, bringing the whole family. So what we learn here is one marriage times. Marriage in the context of violent extremist group is not just marriage. It is about expanding the networking. And it is about producing more Mujahidin in the future. So they can have enough people to always support the idea of Islamic State. And because of that, the Paliga must marriage is very much useful for the husband in succeeding the terror act and securing the continuation of Amalia. And also providing safe space to hiding, but also producing more children. And in this part, I just want to highlight what happened in Surabaya. When the process, when the security operation are successfully apprehended, a lot of suspect. And on the other hand, there is also shifting approach by the terrorist group. No longer only depending on the traditional cell system. They're moving into more secure is the family base where radicalization is happening inside the family and they don't need to worry about the security sector able to detect it what happening in the family. So one of the, one of the very obvious that happened in the family in Surabaya bombing was the homeschooling, very common in the two families. So that is the way they bring more children into, you know, the easier process of radicalization. The second learn that we need to see is when we talk about gender. We need to remember that gender is not binary opposition. The gender is very flexible and it is flux, it is fluid. Is actually when you see ISIS are very successful in using the idea of non-binary gender in order to be able to recruit the women because they want to over sense of empowerment and sense of recognition. That is the need that the women inside of violent extremists is really needed. Why? Because in many, many years, they already experienced that gender inequality in the context of jihad. It is really putting women into the, you know, the periphery as the supporting system. So now they're demanding this. But on the other hand, the men group are also realizing that there are so many male terrorists arrested by the government and now they need to change the strategy using the women. And I don't think this is equal empowerment, is really instrumentalization of women body. And they know very well about it. And we also realizing that shifting meaning of jihad used to be with the approval of the leader. And now it's really depend on individual. If you are ready to do jihad, then you right away can actually do. Therefore, if you see the chart that I shared to you earlier. That is the impact of the terror attack no longer in a critical or high level. Because many of the terror, the, terror acts actually uh, uh did not prepare very well. Uh but they just want to try and showing uh, you know, uh that they can do it. And, and the connection between what happened in particularly places to another. Uh country is also uh, uh important to be uh, uh concerned. For example, what happened with the perpetrator of Mahasar bombing has a strong relation with the Jolo. Uh, uh, uh bombing, so this kind of thing, you can, you will see the connection in the regional uh level uh later on. And for the women, I think the, the internet and social media uh not only just enabler. Is really providing unlimited space and power for the women. Then they are more secure and they are more uh, uh flexible in playing their role, including. Inserting themselves into ideological chatting that they never engaged uh, uh before. So this still continuing. Because Indonesia uh, uh government only focusing to all the account on the social media. That showing the uh strong ISIS ideology. But not the radical thinking or uh the intolerant part that actually highlighted by Dina. Uh the new phenomenon that we are dealing in Indonesia is the rise of conservatism. Uh that also dangerous because that can actually bring into the more serious step to radicalization. So ISIS declining, yes. Why? Because there are many law now uh enforcing, yeah? And the collapse of ISIS, of course, definitely uh, uh drying up of the travel to Syria. And also self-awareness among individual and strengthening the anti-terrorism law and so many. Uh, uh successful story on the uh, uh operation detachment by detachment eighty-eight. Uh that actually uh, uh showing us a very uh obvious now the ISIS declining. However, we need to be very careful with some of the organization that not declaring, of course, as the terrorists. But they are having idea on uh Islamic state. And if you know that, it's always there in the context of Indonesia. Because it is already rooted in our history even before independent, but until now. The, the, the uh, the movement is different because the movement is more soft and more. Uh, uh engaging with uh, uh school, for example, and many uh others of potential. Uh including Islamic uh boarding school, but not all Islamic boarding school actually having this. Uh, uh influence. So we need to be very careful with the Indonesian Institute for Islamic Dhaa according to AIPAC. Hilafatul Muslimin and of course FBI, that you know that there are many uh, uh people. Uh, uh or the militant that actually. Experimented before uh into this organization before they uh quit. And then they enter to other uh more strong uh, uh extremist organization. And uh I skip this and this is if you asking. What is Aman doing? This is the, our, our uh framework, we are continuing. Working on strengthening community resilience. Through the role of the women, we keeping our program. That strengthening women leadership uh through the Women's School for Peace, operating. In forty-two communities currently engaging more than two thousand uh, uh interfaith uh mothers. To learn about peace, uh gender equality, and in particularly to learn about skill, how to embrace diversity. Uh as Indonesian. And we realizing that working with mother is very potential because they are the heart of the family. And I do believe that if we have strong family, we will have uh, our community change. And it is proven in fourteen years working in the community when we increase trust and confidence. Uh with uh, the, the women and then children, uh confidence and trust is also increasing. Because they are proud of the mother and they can be friends. And if we prove, if, if the mother who are empowered able to provide woman open relation. Where children openly raise a, a, a question. Then that actually creating more equal and more open relation in the family. And including if you see the women active. Then finally you will see that the young people is starting to be very active in the community, including the husband. Because they are very much curious. With the women uh, uh taking active role in the community, but not only that, I can tell you the secret. Because when we approach the women, the women actually helping us to think about other marginalized groups in the community. So that is uh, uh, uh one of the uh pre- uh condition. Uh, uh how our community uh change because the different actors engaging into uh the process.
Ruby, uh, I need to interrupt you, yes, uh please, yeah, thank you very much, yes.
So the dangerous uh, uh dialogue that we started is actually uh equipping the women ulama with the skill of dialogue. In many years, we actually neglecting from our neighbors. Who are Sunni Shia Ahmadi Wahabi Osalafi. We just don't want to make the conversation because we are different. School of thoughts or different political evaluation. And Aman started to try open up uh the, you know, and leaving the comfort zone. And, and, and started to bring. The women ulama coming from different school of thoughts to have a dialogue, in particular responding to controversial issues. The idea is how to increase their skill on embracing diversity when they uh, uh, uh. When they can, then they can live as a neighbor. Other thing on the last part that we are interested to share, our job currently is ensuring the government. In implementation of the second Women's Security Net. Uh need to be integrated with the agenda of PVE because. The two net that now Indonesia implementing, the PVE net and WPS net. Just they need to have communication one another uh because in the, in the. Because this two has a strong agenda and particularly. Uh increasing the resilience uh, uh among the women and, and youth. And the working group. That we are working currently is the initiative from the national level. That we realizing we need to collaborate and we need to have a space where we can share. Among civil society, but at the same time also uh sharing with uh the government. So then the tension can be reduced and we can have better communication with the government. Government also have a better understanding about civil society work. I think with the present of working group on women and PCVE, currently we are trusted in helping the government. Uh hand by hand in implementing uh Preventing Violent Extremism uh NET, National Action Plan in several. Area for us, it is not just implementing. It is to strengthen the civic space in the democracy and it is needed. And we need to create whatever the reason. That we need to work together, we need to make sure that civil society have to be. In the decision-making process in different uh levels. So we will see that our uh policy and the implementation will be much, much uh better with the present of uh civil society. Thank you, Isaac. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Ruby, that's very comprehensive uh presentation. Uh but I, I mean, um, as like other people, I really hate to interrupt your presentation, your speaker's presentation. Since we have a very short time, we need to have uh more, you know, a space for Q and A. Um so, um, yes, now it's a Q and A session. I, I'd like to remind our audience on Zoom to, you can post your questions or comments on Zoom chat. And also you may raise your hand to ask questions to our speakers. Also, our Facebook audience, you may post your questions on the live, Facebook live stream comments. Um, since we haven't had any um comment or questions yet, um, it's very interesting. Let me just uh quickly summarize what, um, you know, have been, uh what the speakers have, uh. Have talked about uh tonight. So I think that's a, uh, the, the presentations are very dense and very comprehensive and it's especially. And I mean, the complexity is just so big, it's, it's very, um, 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 it's very huge, especially when. When the perspectives are coming from different uh countries in Southeast Asia, right? So I think number one is important to understand terrorism, um, not only from uh, uh terrorism lens itself. But also, um, what, from what Dina's present, uh, from what Dina has uh talked about is to understand it. From, you know, in uh the root causes of terrorism such as intolerance, fundamentalism and so on. So it's very important to have that understanding that drive um, um, people, uh radicalize people into terrorism. Number two, um, you know, from, from Amina, from Dina's and also from Ruby's presentation, we can see the uh role of women. In violent extremism um has increased over the years um, in numbers, but also in a more significant role. Uh for example, financing, um, you know, educating, so it's not, it's not only uh about traditional role anymore. It's about um organizational role in the movement, um, in the jihadi movement itself. Uh as Ruby put it like in the, in the jihadi movement itself. And um, number three, um, we also need to uh take note that, um. You know, how terrorists or jihadi organizations, uh, you know, are changing strategies over time. Um, um, uh to adapt with us, with the political situations with, uh, to, as, to, to. Uh, for example, uh, you know, targeting uh different uh places, worship places, individuals, using different strategies. And also using uh what's Ru- uh what Ruby's uh point, I mean, I, that I find very interesting is using women. Women's body uh as a political tool uh in the movement. So I think um those are the most important points that we um really need to. Um, you know, understand in today's presentations. So um, I think I have a question for um, few questions for our speakers. If there's no question from the participants uh to start the conversation, maybe for Dina, right? Um, um, yeah, there are a lot of drivers of radicalization as mentioned by um. Um, you know, other speakers as well, and you have mentioned few drivers, especially in the Malaysian context. Um, and um, you know, the lack of education, so so economic um, uh grievances and so on. Um, so these are the things that radicalize men and women into radicalization to join extremist group. But then also from your fieldwork, um, uh stories and also data. You also mentioned that uh there are some women, I mean, a lot of women, especially in Malaysia, um, who, you know, um educated women. Uh they are professionals, um, they still, you know, being, they are still uh joining this kind of movement. So, um, why is that? Because the solution is to have more education, so it's like, you know, the paradox, there's a paradox there. So can, could you please enlighten us about that um point?
Uh, thank you so much, Isaac, and to first of all pose that question. You know, I've always. Even in my personal private moments, I wonder why do people do what they do, yeah? And, you know, I always go back to the conversations we had, you know, we've spoken like Ruby, Amina, all of you. When we have questions, why do you do with all these things when you have this? At least in the case of Malaysia, the one resounding to the kids coming back is this, it's not a test about. This perceived idea of the lack of social capital, which until today, Isaac, I, you know, like. I'll tell you another conversation another day that which left me really scratching my head. But what came out again and again? In Malaysia is this, I think that we are. A predominantly Malay Muslim majority country. And many feel, whether they're professionals, whether they are poor, whether they're from the camps or cities or semi. Urban areas, it's that they feel that. The government, the so-called government that professes to fight for Malay rights, Muslim rights, has failed them, you know? Um, they got the, oh, you're supposed to bring, uh, bring the Muslim country lah with all this Muslim principles. Why is there so much corruption? You know, it's so blatant, now, why are you doing what you're doing? You talk about scholarships, for example, and one of these things came up, when you talk about scholarships benefiting. The Malays, which a lot of non-Malays talk about, it benefits a certain Malay. Okay, there are some of many from the, from, from villagers who've actually been, you know, privileged enough to get, you know, scholarships because you're clever. But anyway, when you come back to work, right? Yes, many of us have actually worked through the trenches and come to a certain point. But what is very blatant and what they see right now is that. This blatant upper display of power. Uh wealth, which comes through ill-governed. So they feel that, you know. Okay lah, like uh with any militant group, not just IS, yeah. They, okay, they may be radical, they, you know, some people actually have said this, we don't agree with the violence that. IS or GI or Al Qaeda, you know, uh promote. But the thing is, they want an Islamic state. A country that is run by Islamic principles because obviously for Malaysia, in their minds, this is not happening. You know, you're talking about riba interest, look at, you know, our Islamic banking, we still have a bit of this. So they say that this is all screwed up. Um, it sounds very simplistic and I remember, Isaac, when we first started out, and I was always behind the camera listening, and I go. Are you, are you, you know, like, why do you think this way, why, why, why? But, you know, your, your fears, right? Your happiness are all based, you know, in what you have in your head and heart. I know this sounds like Oprah Winfrey, but really, if this is what you think and obsess about, it becomes your reality. I know maybe, you know, research-wise, academic, this may not be a strong argument. But every time I meet, even with my new research, when I meet this Tanja Boys, this group, group Sila, right? Where they complain about, you know, the presence of non-Muslims or non-Malays in a country and, you know, they live in Bangsa. Or Taman Tono Damasara Heights, and you're like, you're not suffering, you know, but in their heads, they are. So what do you do now? Where did the siege mentality come from? When, if you look at the politics of Malaysia, it's supposed to promote Bumi Putra or the Malay Kunya agenda, right? You look again, and how things have been conducted in Malaysia where it benefits a certain elite. Look, we live in a feudalistic society, whether you like it or not. Maybe the monarchy, the Rajas, the Tengkuh are not as powerful as before. But you've got the Datto's and Tanjus and God knows what, right? And I'm going to say, in Malaysia, everyone's always impressed by a title, whether it's bot or legal. Okay, now Pak Datto, that's it. So the average Malay Muslim. Feels very slighted, where is my chance then? Why can't I be like this? Why, you know, so that is what I see. Yes, I agree, joining militant Kunya movements, far-right movements are very extreme actions. And what drives that? I mean, when we were talking, I was listening to Amina and everyone, right? I was having this WhatsApp with some friends, because they all like talking about a certain personality. And then I asked, what drives this person to be so hateful? Does this person have a family problem? Is this person, you know, psychologically a psychopath and needs treatment? What? We, okay, we are always talking about drivers about, you know, the economy, okay, that's true. The politics of a country, yes, corruption, et cetera, et cetera. But that switch to become hateful, that you want people to be destroyed, countries, communities to be destroyed. Where does that come from? And that's something which we need to ask. We haven't found that answer, I mean, for now it's very academic lah, you know, and what don't they say, et cetera, et cetera, but. I don't think we have found that answer, and before I let the next me. It was a question that I, uh, this question that I had was foreign this morning also. Can someone be de-radicalized? Everyone talks about a partner, Sabah Abbas, you know, former GI, he's been, you know, de-radicalized. I think you can, but there are very few. If you have that conviction, it's not going to be easy to forget it. Uh, I mean, you know, sometimes you hear now all this, you know, we've got the success rate with de-radicalization. And you have conversations with other people in your life, naturally, you know, you're pretending. I don't think it's easy to get rid of conviction, it becomes like your dad, your daddy, your DNA. Um, I don't have all the data on that, I'm not a psychologist. But the two things that keep coming out every time we have these conversations, whether you're a young old. Lack of social uh real capital and the fact that the state, the country, the government has failed them. Has to keep these extreme measures.
All right, thank you, Dina, um. Um so, yeah, so that's that's the complexity in uh violent extremism studies where radicalization drive, drivers to radicalization are very complex. There is, there are no generic uh drivers um when it comes to that. Um yeah, so um before we go, before we go to Rosanna and Azura, uh can you guys hear me? Yep, we, before we go to Rosanna and Azura, I just, I would like to uh mention again, um my second point just now, um not only that we have to recognize the role of women in in extremism, but also from Amina's representation, you know, the role of women in peacebuilding as well. Um especially in con- uh conflict-affected area. And the um the show or the uh push for uh women's icons, uh you know, are really helping in order to promote women empowerment. So um um let's hear from um our audience, Zoom audience, who have raised their hands. Uh let's go with Rosanna first.
Uh thank you very much, Isaac, and thank you very much, Dina, Amina, and but Ruby for a very engaging, engaging um presentation. Sorry, I've got to um take out my earphones now. Can you all hear me? You all can hear me, right? All right.
Yes.
Okay, uh so my question is this, because um in light of all that we have heard about the context uh in our uh countries and how uh we are all, uh you know, the the issue of extremism uh uh is uh has come about and how uh it's being mobilized and and what we're doing to address uh um addressing the best way that we can. Um I would also like to find out particularly from uh Amina and Ruby, uh what was the reactions of um the people around you in the context of the Philippines and Indonesia when the Taliban uh uh took power of Afghanistan? Uh what was interesting that we observed here in Malaysia is that um the public voices, you know, uh were actually um willing to uh take a step back and 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 give uh the Taliban um the benefit of the doubt. You know, so uh so people were saying that, you know, yes, you know, um uh the 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 United States itself, uh but now that the Taliban is in power, we shouldn't be dissing them. And um and and we should actually uh give them a chance to prove themselves. And and that was just astounding to me because these voices, uh you know, again, I I think, you know, they come from people who are educated, who have seen the world, um who are not ignorant of what is happening uh around us. Um but yet, you know, they could still see the Taliban as a force that could be reasonable and can be reasoned with. Um so I'm just wondering whether that reaction was just specifically, you know, like uh be- because of the context that we're in, whether it's Malaysians only or whether um the in the Philippines and Indonesia, um you experienced the same or or something that's different? Thank you.
Yeah, uh before Amina and Dina and also Ruby, uh Ruby to answer that Rosanna's question, maybe um just a reminder that we might extend the discussion a little bit, if if that's okay. Um so we are, we just about to start, you know? So we have another questions here from Azura. But before that, let's have Amina, uh especially Amina and Ruby, uh to answer that question.
Thank you, uh thank you, Rosanna, for that uh question. First, I think you may be interested to know that the Abu Sayyaf Group, uh the leader who founded the what was to become the Abu Sayyaf Group, actually was one of those Mujahideen who were encouraged by the United States um uh security establishment to go to Afghanistan and help their um brothers to resist the um USSR. And when this Mujahideen came back home and found the same situation in their communities, then they took their newfound skills of uh making mines and and all that um and established what was later to become the Abu Sayyaf. So there is that link between Mujahideen in Muslim Mindanao and the Mujahideen in Afghanistan. Now, when you look at what the Taliban has uh become, we cannot deny the fact that they have succeeded in um uh governing, I mean, in in taking over Afghanistan. They are there and they're going to be there for the for the near future. They signed an agreement after all with Donald Trump. And what I have um experienced in the many years that I've worked with our ulama in the south and fundamentalist leaders in Muslim Mindanao. And first, let me premise this, I'm a democracy advocate. I don't veil. Um I can be very aggressive in pushing for human rights. But when I go to the south, I have learned to listen and take it slow by slow. Because there is no way you can impose a point of view from the outside if there is no response, no positive response from the inside. After all, we do have a surah that says that, you know, God will not change the condition of man if man does not can change it uh himself. So the way I look at what's going on in Afghanistan, there has got to be a way to um establish some kind of uh relationship with the Taliban, and it will most likely be medium to long term. Do not expect miracles. Twenty years of democratization did not work. But there has got to be some common ground established. And there has got to be a way of developing a homegrown type of democracy in Afghanistan, one that will be accepted by the majority of the Afghans. Remember that uh Afghanistan is is fragmented. You have fithums, and you have fithum leaders who are fighting for supremacy. In some ways, it is like what Muslim Mindanao was uh before they started uniting and um proclaiming that they are part of the Bangsamoro, the Moro nation of the south. So I, my advice is to have a long-term point of view and just continuously work, especially on reaching out and empowering leaders from within who may be um more responsive to democracy, although in Islamic um uh within the Islamic context, to the provision of human rights, to the good treatment of women and girls. Because after all, Islam liberated women, something that uh most Muslims forget and what the the Christian world does not realize. Islam, when it came, gave women freedom. It gave, it it uh allowed women to own uh their own property. And um when you look at polygamy, polygamy was uh is not really a perk of being a Muslim. It was a way of providing for widows and orphans. So we have got to get our Islamic scholars to go uh re-establish its jihad and look at what Islam was meant to be and find common ground with those who are now ruling Afghanistan.
Thank you, Amina. Ruby, do you want to respond?
Yeah. I think what happened in Indonesia, uh if we can use the social media uh to s- as the representing the hidden uh voices in in real, then we see that very clear the resonance, ki- uh the 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 victory of Taliban uh giving strong resonance to the local group, in particularly the group who believing uh in uh Islamic state. And they put Taliban as the success story that uh can uh, you know, uh increase more the optimism and the new energy to fight for Islamic state uh in Indonesia. If you see the 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 noisy in in the social media, it is very clear who are the group that are actually supporting Taliban uh uh idea. Uh that the group is been monitored for a long time, uh very much uh uh close to the uh radical uh uh group. So that not so, how do you call it, new uh for us. But the interesting for Indonesia, once when the voices uh of glorifying Taliban victory, then that is the time when civil society in Indonesia, who believing on democracy, they're starting to intervene the public discourse by having continuously a public discussion relating with Afghanistan and looking at with a different angle, particularly the discourse on the women's rights, for example, become mainstream. And the discourse on the uh moderation in Islam is also become very strong. And finally, that bring the women's civil society in eleven September recently uh uh also conducted open mic to invite the the public and particularly civil society who work on the uh gender equality in Islam and 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 very various a background to actually reflect what happened in Afghanistan and agree on the position of Indonesia to not leaving Afghanistan. We want our Indian, our government to still supporting the people of Afghanistan and particularly protection of the women's rights uh and also girls. Uh and it is more the longer uh uh term. But we actually avoiding all the discourse relating with the victory, how Taliban getting the victory and all of that. But actually shifting the discourse at an at the social uh media and also our uh national media in order to make people uh critical about what happened in Afghanistan. But at the same time, bringing Indonesia to get more involved in international uh peace, including responding Taliban uh uh Afghanistan in the future with a more strategic and particularly using humanitarian aids, but integrating with the moderation uh in Islam. So we will see, Insha Allah, in the future, the way diplomacy of Indonesia to Afghanistan may change. That they should have the strong influence on promoting Islam wasatia and also moderation uh in Islam. And Indonesia already invested uh uh several years in bridging Afghanistan ulama into uh Indonesia ulama. Some of uh uh Kupi also invited uh there. So I think there is a um potential for uh continuing uh support uh for the people of uh Afghanistan. But I think uh for Malaysia and other country, we really need to shift the discourse, yeah? Not to bringing into glorification, but more in the productive and more critical. Thank you.
Yeah. Can I, can I just quickly add to, add to that?
Yes.
Um you know, right after nine eleven, there was a big gathering organized by Brookings Institution in the Middle East, and there were like five hundred leaders of uh of the Muslim world, the Arab world. And out of that five hundred, there were only like ten, fifteen of us from from Southeast Asia. And in that uh conference, the US Islamic World Forum, I took the floor and I said, why are there only a handful of us from Southeast Asia when the largest working Muslim democracy is in Southeast Asia? And that's Indonesia, where the most stable economy is in Southeast Asia. And that's Malaysia, where the peace agreement that has been signed between a um a liberation front, a Muslim liberation front, and a non-Muslim government is in Southeast Asia, in the Philippines. And I said, what you should do, instead of bringing in Western democracy advocates to uh talk about democracy in uh in these areas, whether it is Syria or uh or Afghanistan, is to come and let them talk to our scholars from Indonesia and from Malaysia because here it's working. And I think that is one of the, that is one of the problems, that their sense of democracy and rights is not homegrown. And I have to keep repeating that. Whatever reform must be homegrown. It must be accepted by the community because if it's not, no trillions of dollars is going to change the community.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate that optimist's um view.
Eternal optimist.
Yeah. Yes, uh that you guys offered is very uh good. Um Dina, do you want to respond as well to the question? Very quickly, unfortunately, yeah.
You know, I had to rush to the loo just now, so I didn't really hear a lot. But you know, before everyone goes back and starts thinking, oh my God, we're all going to die. I can tell you this, whether it's in Indonesia, the Philippines, or Malaysia, wherever in Southeast Asia, right? I believe all of us have conversations with anyone, everyone, you know, at the mommas, at restaurants, wherever. I believe that the so-called silent majority, right? Actually doesn't believe in this extremist agenda. It's just that right now, things are hard, so they can't think of anything else. Look, when people say, are all Malays like this, this, this? I have had these questions, okay? Asked by my normally friends. I go to Facebook, I belong to adult lovers Facebook group, right? And they're ninety percent Malays, most of the women were hijab. They feed the dogs, they don't, maybe they don't take care, some take care of the dogs. And I think that just looking at this, you know, the snapshot of Malay Malaysia, Muslim Malaysia, where people are talking to each other about, you know, dogs, rescuing dogs, treating them. Tells me that we are not that, you know, we're not radicalized in that sense. There is still hope. But I think what we all need to do is, just like Amina says, we need to, we need to give confidence to the right, you know, to say, look, what you say matters. Speak up. Um I don't think the political parties have been able to do that. But I, for me personally, when I speak to the young, when I see a lot of young people, uh that's Huda, of course, who's who says, this unfalshari, this Fadina, see they? I've met Muziru, all this, you know, young, young people who teach me things. And I go, okay, it's not so bad. Sometimes maybe I frighten myself still, you know? But uh but yeah, I think you have to be an optimist.
Yeah. Yes, yes, um um yes, we have come to the last question, I'm afraid. Um very quickly, Azura, your question, and uh we're gonna have our speakers respond.
Yep, hello, hi, Dina.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, right, thank you, the speakers. Uh basically, I'm working in an organization uh that focus on security act, which mostly are related to terrorism. Uh nevertheless, the cases that we receive are mostly more skip goods issues, not related to real terrorism and more of police abuse in their power in the name of terrorism itself. And I really like when all the speakers were saying about, we have to change to grassroots and not acts. Uh nevertheless, uh looking at the grassroots uh from uh Dina, first is like uh mostly is the middle class and upper class and the and the grassroots in, I think in the Philippines and Indonesia. uh mostly is the middle class and upper and the and the grassroots in, I think in the Philippines and Indonesia are more education is more to lower class. And I think, and you know, there's a difference of need on how to go to grassroots service. That's the first one. And the second thing is that, uh can I know is that any specific act use? Um I think Ruby and T said this, Indonesia, that you also have a act that actually help this. But do you have any cases that abuse of power of police itself? And perhaps, I mean, I also can also explain if it happens in the Philippines, yeah.
Yeah, I welcome any speaker who wants to respond to us.
Uh I can, I I I can go. Um well, thanks, uh thanks for the question, Azura. There are differences really in the levels, uh I guess the societal levels uh that we have, we have talked about. And maybe Indonesia, the Indonesian case and the Philippine case may have more in common because we do have areas of conflict and we do have big pockets of impoverished communities with low levels of education. And the way that we have approached it um in the Philippine context in Mindanao has been really to look for the the influence, uh the influencers, the possible change agents. And most of them are uh women of faith. They teach in the madrasa. So they can be middle class, they can belong to the lower income groups, but they have a position of influence within the community. And we link them with civil society who have access to a slightly different perspective, perhaps more modern, more more Western. We link them as well with women who are in business, who are with government. Because once they start talking together and working together, then the influences permeate. And through these change agents who have been working together and whom we have networked, you see the change going down to the communities to reach the uh the lower income groups. Uh because we do have a very high uh level of poverty in uh in Muslim Mindanao. But let me warn you that it is not a quick fix. I started working with the the women who teach in the madrasa and networking them with um civil society leaders in twenty, in two thousand three. And we were able to have them organized into their network by two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So you must have a long-term perspective. And I'm glad that Ruby also mentioned that. You cannot have a quick fix. You cannot fly in with your posters and your manwales and your big streamers and think that after the training conference, everything's good and you have educated the influencers. No, it has got to be sustained and you cannot let go until they kick you out. Because once they kick you out, you know they're autonomous and they will do the work on their own.
Other speaker wants to respond?
Uh yeah, I think uh we appreciate what are the um progress that Indonesia has. But as the uh women peace builders and uh women human rights defenders working on freedom of religion and expression, we realize then that this area is a big challenge uh for Indonesia to really, you know, uh um perform well in handling uh the cases of uh minority uh uh in particularly faith uh minority in Indonesia. There are still a lot of cases uh happening and dealing with this, I think the police um also not strongly using our constitution, rather more influencing by the idea that because you are uh the considered as deviant, so therefore you got attacked. So they, the police, uh rather to prevent the group who, the intolerant group uh were going to attack uh the the minority, the police actually asking or securing the minority. So that is the protocol. It's very weird, but uh this is the big uh criticism to uh the police uh uh agency to really using constitution uh in the protection of uh minority. We still have a big problem in the the abuse of the regulation called information and technology that actually been, you know, uh used by in in a wrong way. And particularly when somebody sharing uh the story that relating with the religion, how abused the religion and that story can be manipulate, but manipulated by the intolerant group and viral and that the way I don't see uh the police can handle very well. So we are still facing serious issue on freedom of religion. Last issue regarding with the for, the the formalization of the hijab in the school, for example, raising a lot of protests in Indonesia. But then uh uh the way government tackling this very slow, I mean, in 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 our eyes. But the the nice of the civil society in Indonesia, keeping continuing, yeah? And doing, countering and or even shifting the direction of the conversation, uh go back to the constitution and also bringing the Islam as rahmatanil alamin and all other discourses that at teaching the public to understand why we react to the uh uh regu- local regulation that forcing the students uh wearing uh hijab, not because we are not Islamic enough, because Indonesia should uh 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 stand for the constitution, not the Quran. Because we are not Islamic state and we have to go back to the constitution. So teaching this to the pe- public is is not easy, but what I like, the 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 space for the uh creation on the controversial uh uh always there and respected, uh including balancing voices from the uh progressive and from the conservative other. So the public actually got uh enough education uh on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um everyone, especially our speakers and also our participants who have, you know, been um tuning with us until, especially in Manila and also Kuala Lumpur, it's ten twenty-three PM already. But um before we conclude, I would like, I mean, my main ta- takeaway again um from this discussion, we need to understand that terrorism is is a systemic problem. Um it can, the problem um can, uh you know, the drivers of the problem can come from socioeconomic, education problem. And the second one is this, the solutions, but in order to address this problem, it must be organic as uh being emphasized many times by our speakers. And we have to engage with the community, with the religious leaders, and these um solutions have to be sustainable. We cannot, you know, achieve um uh uh success and overnight, or you know, Rome was not, wasn't built in overnight. You know, that's what they said. So um thank you very much, everyone. Before um we, before we go, um we have a poll uh from the organizer, uh just to um get your feedback about the program. So please do a vote, um you know. This would help the organization um in the future, um in organizing more programs like this, webinars and also study sessions. All right, so I think that's it. Um thank you very much um to our speakers, Dina, Ruby, Amina, uh for um speaking with us, uh you know, um telling us your experience and uh stories as well. We really appreciate that. Um and we thank our participants on Facebook as well as Zoom um for listening um tire, you know, tirelessly um with us tonight. So until we we meet or see you again, uh take care and stay safe. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. Stay safe.
Keep safe.